Back, everybody. Thank you so much for joining the Seattle City Council Select Budget Committee. Today is Thursday, October 12, 2023. I'm Teresa Mosqueta, Chair of the Committee. Time is 2:01 PM. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Herbold.
Here.
Council President Juarez. You're on mute, Council President.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Sawant. Councilmember Strauss. Councilmember Nelson. Chair Mosqueta.
Present.
Six present.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I do see Councilmember Nelson's tile. So I assume when we see her pop back in, we can list her as president and when our other two colleagues join us as well. We'll make sure. Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. And when our other two colleagues join us, we'll make sure to note them as well. Okay, so we took a short recess midway through our presentation. I want to thank HSD and the team from from Central Staff for letting us take a pause there. We had concluded our comments on Slide 9. Our recess will end and we will reconvene now, leading into Slide 10. Thank you, Patty, for teaming that up for us. And we have two other items after we get through HSD that we will go on to, and that includes an overview of the arts investments as Agenda Item Number 3. And the final item for our agenda today is Office of Economic Development. Let's continue on with our Item 2, Slide Number 10, as we look at funding for diversion programs. This is related to the last slide that we looked at prior to recess in terms of what strategies would be provided to allow for people to have alternatives to arrest. I'll let Central Staff go through this, but I do want to put into context that some of the concerns that I and others raised about the legislation that was before Council, a week prior to receiving the budget, had noted and touted a handful of new investments that were promised related to strategies that would yield additional treatment options or pre-arrest diversion strategies. And I think that it's clear from the last slide on opioid treatment facilities, we still have no indication of what the operating costs will be, when the facilities will open, what the dollar amount is for the maintenance and operation within those facilities, and ensuring that we have a robust array of services within the facilities is also a concern for Council members. Having answers to these questions prior to passing the legislation was one of the concerns that I raised at the time. And at this point, we've received the budget and there's still a handful of questions on what type of services we are talking about corresponding with the $7 million in CUDBG funds that was for capital only. Now, we're going to talk about funding for diversion programs and, again, what appears to be the indication, at least from the stakeholders that we've talked to, and I think this was confirmed in the CBO presentation as well, that there is no new enhanced funding for diversion programs. So it might be continuation of of lead investments or diversion programs plus inflation, but there is no significant new investment to correspond with the legislation that we just saw a week prior to the budget being received. I'll turn it over to Central Staff to walk us through the presentation, and then we'll take some questions.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Committee members, Ann Gorman, Council Central Staff. This is the last issue that we have identified with respect to the HSD budget proposal. It is funding for diversion programs, and the memo that you received contains quite a bit of detail and history, and I will do my best to summarize here. Please stop if questions arise. The Council passed Ordinance 128696 in August, and this ordinance added two new gross misdemeanors to the Seattle Municipal Code, knowing possession of a controlled substance and use of a controlled substance in a public place. And the ordinance also established pre-booking diversion in treatment instead of arrest as the approach that SPD would take in most cases of encountering these behaviors. And when we talk about diversion in this context, I want to be very clear, we mean diversion from the criminal justice system to treatment and services that will ideally deter people from committing the same crimes in the future because their lives have become more stable. HSD has an ongoing contract with an organization called Purpose Dignity Action, or PDA, to provide these pre-booking diversion services via a program called Let Everyone Advance with Dignity, or LEED. And the new ordinance makes specific reference to LEED, and so does SPD's own interim policy about how officers should enforce the new ordinance. That is to say, they are going to enforce it by referring people to LEED. And the LEED program is very well-known to city electeds and decision-makers, and the city has been providing funding for it since 2014. SPD believes that the effect of the new ordinance will be that its officers refer 700 to 800 people annually to the LEED program. That is, new referrals in excess of what is taking place today. The proposed budget does not increase PDA contract funding for this anticipated increased referral volume. As, as the Chair stated in her introduction just a moment ago, the amount in the HSD budget is a status quo funding amount, and that amount is $6.9 million plus an additional $2 million added by Council during last year's budget process. I'll pause for questions, just in case there are any. I will go on.
Maybe you are anticipating, Vice Chair, Herbold, please go ahead.
I just, I'll have some remarks and questions after you go through the options, but I want to just flag, think the the budget, or the Central Staff memo on this, let me just see if I can get to it here, had some different numbers. Think, or maybe it's even the options that you listed here. I just remember seeing some numbers that didn't add up. I thought I saw a reference to, yes, there it is. Says the 2024 endorsed budget included $6.9 million of ongoing funding for LEED, an additional $2 million. And then, two sentences later, it says with $9.9 million. I think, is, am I correct that it should be 8.9 million, or is there another million in there somewhere?
9.9 million is the amount that was budgeted for 2023. 8.9 million is the amount that is budgeted for 2024. Council created a CBA adding $2 million each in 2023 and 2024. And then there, later on, there was another sort of omnibus CBA that found another $1 million in 2023.
Excellent. And just wondering, are you, I really appreciate your write-up in the budget paper. Appreciate your making distinctions between pre-booking and and prefiling diversion. I appreciate your tying the need for diversion programs to the passage of Ordinance 128696, the executive order that followed, and the SPD policies that are, we are going to be, that are going to be promulgated very soon. And it sounds like, Ann, you have maybe seen a preview of those. It, I think is, will find is, is very direct to the expectations that people are referred to, to LEED. And so I will, if you're going to get into that level of detail, I'll pause until you you discuss sort of the, the pre-booking and the, the prefiling. If not, I think I wanted to make a point about, I think, a cohort or a tranche of, of LEED's work that isn't referenced, that I think is really important to the implementation of the ordinance.
I don't know if I, if I had been planning to get into that level of detail, so I I think the time is right for you to, to offer the context that you have in mind.
Very, very, very helpful. So the ordinance and the policies that follow sort of create two cohorts of people. People who are likely to be eligible for arrest and thus eligible to either pre-booking or prefiling diversion, and a cohort of people who are very unlikely to be arrested, people who are not harming anybody else. And those people are, would be eligible. The expectation is still that, even though the police officers are directed to, to use their discretion to not arrest those people, they're still encouraged to refer those folks to LEED. And so that would be a category of people not identified in your issue ID, and that would be pre-arrest diversion. Typically, pre-arrest diversion has been largely the social contacts. Or community referrals, I should say, not social con, community referrals. Referrals that there's no arrest contemplated, but that it's a community member or a business association that is referring an known individual to LEED. But sometimes, that, those, those community referrals actually come from police officers. They're, again, a known individual, not somebody that anybody's planning to arrest, but somebody that is known to need help. And LEED serves those folks. And so, really appreciate your identifying the the prefiling diversion part of LEED, the, I'm sorry, the prefiling diversion programs that the city attorney refers people arrested to, the 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 other cohort that LEED takes. But there's also missing this whole universe of people who we are assuming are not going to be arrested at all, but that still need help. And so, whereas there was prior, it is, Madam Chair is correct that there was talk about additional resources. When we were debating the, the ordinance, there was no commitment to expand diversion specifically. There was a commitment to include funding for additional services associated with substance use disorder. And I confirmed with the mayor's office that there was no cut to the Council's funding for LEED. It is still, I think, a very important conversation to have because realistically, if we're providing sufficient funding for LEED's pre-booking program, we need to also look at sufficient funding for the, the non-arrest types of diversion. And there, there will be trade-offs that LEED will have to make. They might need to decide to no longer take community referrals from community partners like our constituents, like folks in our neighborhood business districts. They might need to make a decision to not take those referrals so that they're taking more of the police officers' referrals. And so I just think that that's an important context for this, for this conversation of whether or not we need to look at enhancing funding for, for LEED. Thanks for letting me go off on that tangent.
I appreciate, I appreciate the tangent, and you're exactly right that most of the referrals to LEED currently are from community members. I think that about 65% of current referrals are from community members. It is possible that due to the directive of Ordinance 128696, most or all of referrals in the future will be from law enforcement. And we don't, we don't know in what ways that might change the character of the program, change the way that the program is perceived, both by community members and by program participants. The, you know, this, this issue is really specific to the, to the effects and impacts of the new ordinance. But I, it's been an ongoing question for Council members whether base funding for LEED is where they believe it should be. All right, so, moving, moving back to the, the issue at hand. PDA holds the city contract for LEED services, but it relies on a specialist subcontractor agency to work directly with participants as case managers. PDA, their, their role is more to provide project management and oversight for the LEED program. And in, in that capacity, and unrelated to the new ordinance, earlier this year, PDA initiated a request for proposal, request for proposals, looking for additional case management entities for LEED. PDA's perspective is that this is, this is just good practice in the sense of not putting all the eggs in one basket. It would be great to spread the work across a couple case management agencies, if possible. And as, as a result of the RFP process, PDA will soon have information about potential new case management entities that could run a LEED sub-project under subcontracts valued between half a million and $2 million. So much, much smaller than, than we currently are funding. Just want to, want to add again, SPD believes that the new ordinance requirements will result in increased referrals to LEED. And if Council does too, there may be an opportunity to right-size new city funding adequate to meet the new referral volume. This would work by getting information from SPD on the actual number of new referrals to LEED, which may or may not be within that 700 to 800 a year range, and resourcing HSD with a list of case management entities who could take on increments of new LEED work. And the executive could then fund the work on an as-needed basis via legislated budget actions. And the new funding would be added to HSD's contract with the PDA, but the majority of it would go to identified new case management entities. Any, any questions?
Well, thank you so much. Are you done walking through the options here?
No, no, I will, I can, I can walk through the options. I can walk through the options now. They follow directly from, from what I just said. Council could create a slide requesting that HSD develop this roster of case management entities that could accept contracts to scale their work responsive to PDA's current RFP process. So again, this, this would not, this would not be a new body of work for, for HSD. PDA is, is already doing this work. HSD would just need to retain and be willing to act on the results of the, of PDA's process. Council could create a slide requesting that SPD report on incremental LEED funding need due to Ordinance 128696. And maybe that should properly say SPD report on identified increased referral volume. The funding might not be SPD's body of work. Or Council could take no change and just leave the, the current contract funding to absorb anticipated new referral volume.
Okay, I see a handful of hands, and I have some questions as well. We'll ask Councilmember Nelson to go first. Please go ahead.
I think that I prefer that Councilmember Herbold speak, because she probably has an answer to this, or an opinion. I have just a big, sick question. Go on.
Oh, you'd like Councilmember Herbold to opine first? Okay. Please go ahead, Vice Chair.
Sure. I want to just flag that I have another item for issue ID on this subject, but I can hold that until we're done discussing these options. As relates to these particular options, I think, under, you know, obviously, Options A and B could, can go together. And I, I can't tell you how pleased I am, Ann, that you are being so creative in problem-solving around this issue of needing to scale up as the need is identified, resources to, to fulfill the objectives of the ordinance. I did want to just say that as it relates to requesting an SPD report on incremental LEED funding, I think that such a report should also include information from LEED, or from, I should say, from the PDA, on which cases they are not able to take, and sort of their community referral volume. So, as I mentioned earlier, there is the whole category of, of, of folks who may not be referred to LEED by the Police Department. And I think we would want to capture that information as well in making, in a future council making future decisions about funding.
We are always happy to work with Council members on, on making slides as, as specific as possible. I will, I will reach out.
Thanks, Ann. Councilmember Nelson.
I was going to ask if, if the work group that was established in the ordinance was a good, it was a good place to direct this question about LEED funding going forward, because that does seem to, because it was called out that the policy, that they will be charged with some policy decisions. But I just had another thought that was based on Councilmember Herbold's opening remarks on, you know, make, what does this ordinance contemplate on, on, for diversion? And Section F of, Section 3F says, "It identifies that diversion treatment and other alternatives to booking are the preferred approach when enforcing the prohibition of possession and public use." And I just want to remind folks that diversion is not an end in itself. It is a means to get people the services that they need to get their lives back together. And in this case, it, it means, you know, drug treatment. So I just want to make sure that when we're talking about no additional funding for diversion, there is also no additional funding or any funding for treatment in here as well. And so I just want to make sure that, that our LEED partner, I mean, our diversion partners are making sure that folks get into these service providers. That's it. But you can answer the question about the work group, scope of work, or inquiry.
It's, it's my understanding that the work group has not been formally assembled yet. I last spoke with SFD, excuse me, SPD, about this work group, I think about two weeks ago, and no, no membership or, or desired composition was available at that time. I do know that they are very committed to standing it up as close as possible to when the ordinance becomes effective on, on October 20th. So I will, I will get an update on the work group, and I will follow up. And I also wanted to, I, I wanted to ratify what you just said about LEED participants' interest in drug treatment programs. If I'm recalling correctly, when HSD presented in the Public Safety and Human Services Committee earlier this year, I think that something like 30% of LEED participants expressed interest in some kind of drug treatment program. Chris, Chris Clayson is on this call. He might, he might have a better recollection than I do. But certainly, treatment can be part of diversion. This is one, one of the services that, that LEED case managers connect people with.
I just wanted to offer Director Kim a chance to weigh in, Councilmember Herbold, if that's okay? Director Kim, any clarification? Oh, you might be frozen. Oh, there you are.
No, I, I thought Councilmember Herbold was going to say something. I just wanted to say that the clients, LEED clients, 85% of them get signed up for Medicaid as part of the LEED services, which then makes them eligible for treatment services, right? Fully paid for treatment services. So that is, that is part of the work that LEED, LEED does, is they make people eligible for publicly funded treatment services. That's, I, I think, very much aligned with the goals of diversion and the goals of diverting people into treatment.
I just wanted to clarify a couple things and ask a clarifying question. And I can take the response offline, because I know that this is Council's space to discuss issues. And if Chris does have the data, he's welcome to chime in too, but that's something we've been followed with as well in terms of what folks are asking for. So I heard mention of treatments. I just wanted to underscore that we do have the request for qualifications out for the facilities, and we do have dollars that are held for operational services afterwards. And so we'll make sure that that's presented to Council. We're actually ahead of schedule too, so I'm really pleased to let you know that that's coming out on Monday. October the 16th, we anticipated it coming out November, and so the team is prioritizing that to give providers as much time as possible to respond. And so we do know the importance of that. I do have a clarifying question. I just want to make sure I'm a good partner. In my, in understanding the slide requesting HSD to create and develop a roster based on PDA's RFP, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what that means, is that the expectation, because this is new to me in terms of process, but would it be the expectation that HSD takes a nonprofit procurement process for the purpose of potentially funding those providers if we didn't administer that RFP? So just, and I, again, I can take that response however you'd like, but I am unsure of that one.
Okay, Ann, do you want to comment on that?
Sure. It is, it is a very valid question, Director Kim. And I think the short answer is that we would, we would seek to work out those mechanics with HSD in the process of drafting the, the slide, should Council decide to create one. The, the options that we, the options that we share in these meetings, they're, they're necessarily more ideas than, than specific proposals. This, this is just a place to start from, but you, your, your question is a good one, and we will work with you to, to resolve it and make sure that any, any process requested by Council is, is workable for departments.
I just wanted to jump in quickly as well and confirm Ann's comment about 30%. I believe, Ann, you're referring to referrals based on client need, and about 31% thus far through Q2 were related to substance use treatment.
Thank you, Chris.
Councilmember Herbold.
Thanks. And I just wanted to flag another option that I think would be helpful to this effort. Several years ago, Councilmember Bagshaw sponsored funding, I think during the mid-year adjustment for a database, a LEED database, and staff to manage it. It was intended to be a data, data-sharing platform to allow SPD and PDA and subcontractors to share information regarding their clients. The database created the, I think the staff was hired. But one of the things that never really got off the ground was integration with city departments in the jail so that each SPD, the city attorney's office, and HSD could, could see that the person, that a person in question was actually enrolled in LEED, who the case manager was, what the current plan was for that individual, what barriers might exist for that individual. And so that when partners to that individuals care had new information, they could include that information in the database. And in case of the enforcement of this of this ordinance, to make it easier for the police department to drop in new information, like saw him today at the corner of Third and Virginia. And this was the issue that he was faced with, that sort of thing. And that's really a sort of a vision for this database and its implementation that has not been realized. And would really like to figure out how to sort of pick up that work and get full collaboration of of departments in utilizing that resource.
As, as, as I understand it, the, the, the type of, the type of project you describe is, is the dream of, of a lot of parties who work in this space. But there, there are some data privacy issues that I'm not yet very well versed in. And certainly can get more up to speed on responsive to your, to your option D. As, as I understand it, too, one of the, one of the big successes of the ongoing Third Avenue project has been the ability for all participating groups and people to use the same software and really make efficient communications about people who are served by the Third Avenue project. So whenever, whenever we're able to do that, it's, it's just redounding to the good.
Well, thank you. Thank you to Central Staff. Thanks to our Chair of Human Services for the feedback and HSD for any additional information that you can send our way. You know, I think my concerns about this entire investment is that it's just not enough. We, you know, could ask for additional providers to serve this vulnerable population. But more providers do not create more capacity when this budget does not include additional funding to provide pre-arrest diversion strategies or treatment, as my colleagues have noted. Once again, we have to be clear that there is not enough funding in place to meaningfully expand our division diversion capabilities and to accommodate the caseload. SPD estimates that 700 to 800 new referrals annually. Well, Leeds is at capacity with existing 750 clients. It's not hard to see that the direction that this goes in without meaningful intervention and additional resources take us back in time and rely on jail being the default. While the actual ordinance may say that the priority is diversion without actual diversion strategies and treatment and and options for people to go to, then we will end up seeing more people arrested. So I think we just have to be really clear that the promised funding that was going to correspond with this is, has not been delivered. And we need to, I think, be extremely clear with the public who was expecting there to be, quote, millions of dollars associated. Those millions of dollars are actually annualized over 17 years. So we have a capacity issue that we are going to be facing here. If we're going to take up the entirety of Leeds' caseload, it is our responsibility to be good partners and ensure we don't detract from their ability to take services in the direction that they've been clear that they intend to, decreasing police referrals and increasing community-based referrals. And the way we do that is by increasing our investments in diversion programming proportional to our increase in utilization. I'm concerned that there's no magic option that we can come up with here. And I appreciate that Central Staff is trying to be very creative with the limited resources that we have. And I just want to underscore again, this, this is, this is not delivering on that commitment to have additional funding. The additional funding needed to the tune of the services that need to be scaled up to correspond with the legislation that we just passed. I'm happy to keep talking to my colleagues if you see another option for how to retool this. But I think we just, we need to be clear that the lack of room in diversion is not a reason to arrest. While we say that in our ordinance, the reality is without additional services, that will be the result. Thank you, Anne, for walking us through the options that you have tried to outline with existing funding. But I think we are we are seeing the worst case scenario play out without additional funding in front of us to correspond there. Or I should say, my fears playing out that we wouldn't see that additional funding corresponding. So let's think creatively if we can about how to scale up investments there and and try to keep some promises that were made prior to the end of the budget. I don't know how we do that, frankly, but just flagging it. Counsel, who's going to say counsel vice president? Chair, Madam Vice Chair, please go ahead.
You can call me Lisa. I, I just want to clarify, I think, Anne, does this option that you're proposing sort of facilitate the ability to scale up investments in 2024 as the need is identified? I mean, just assuming that there were in 2024 the maximum number of referrals that SPD is is projecting. They're all going to come in on January 1st, right? So the idea would be to create a structure for which the funding could be dialed up as the need is identified. Is that sort of roughly the concept?
Yes, that is, that is the basic idea. The basic idea is creating a structure that will allow us to make funding available based on our most current understanding of the need for services. So SPD has said 700 to 800 in 2024. You know, one, one way to respond to that would be to add funding for an additional, you know, increment that serves 700 or 800 people. Maybe, maybe SPD is a little off. Maybe it's closer to 400, 500. Let's, let's wait, let's watch, let's see what actually happens. And when we see that, we will have something in place to add funding to meet the need. And it'll be a simple process for the executive to add that funding via a legislated budget action.
Yeah, and the, the, the ordinance due to the, the wisdom of of Madam Chair does have language in it that says the lack of, the lack of funding does not does not default to meaning that there's going to be an arrest in jail. So, I mean, I think really our North Star here is providing the resources to get people the help that they need. And I'm, I'm looking forward to to seeing the police department policies. But again, I have heard that they are, they are very directive to SPD to use diversion as, as the prime alternative to, to arrest and incarceration. So again, looking, looking forward to hearing from others or from reading myself what I've heard from others about about those.
Okay, I think we can move on to the next item. Thank you again. And Anne, are you going to keep with us on these other items? Okay, I see Jennifer coming back in as well. Okay, great.
That's right. I have three items to share. These next three items are contextual issues, so there's no options for council, just information that may be of interest to you in your budget deliberations and recognizing we have more on the agenda. I don't intend to spend a lot of time on each of these. The first contextual issue relates to one-time funding from the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. So there are 16 programs that have been paid for with one-time funds since 2020. And those are programs funded by KCRHA to community partners that are serving people experiencing homelessness. KCRHA had done an analysis that showed had funding not, or was funding not to be extended into 2024, there could be a loss of approximately 300 shelter beds and the ability to prevent or end homelessness for an additional 265 households. KCRHA was able to utilize underspend from 2023 to extend funding for all 16 programs to extend $5.2 million for all 16 programs into 2024. I think the key point that I want to make here is that this is not a sustainable or permanent solution. Again, it just takes one-time funding and extends it for one more year. So eventually, a choice will need to be made whether or not to end funding for some or all of the 16 programs currently receiving one-time funds, redeploy resources from other programs to some or all of those 16 programs when one-time funds expire or identify a new ongoing fund source. And I will pause here and see if there's any questions.
Well, I really appreciate CBO's work with KCRHA to identify underfund. That was a process we had to engage in mid-budget session or late budget session last year for a total of over $9 million. I guess, you know, a lot of folks are interested in the success and the stability of KCRHA, as am I, as, as is this council through repeated votes that we've taken to stand up KCRHA and to fund it. I guess, recognizing that we need a regional solution is not in question here. The question that I have is a little bit more structural and perhaps even CBO, you might have some intel on this. But as we talk about wanting to get real-time data on our underspend on positions unfilled, we've been focused within the city. It seems like that type of information would be beneficial regionally too, as it relates to KCRHA. And, and then, you know, now numerous funders that are actually putting money in from across the the county. Do you have any insight onto whether or not that capability will be known in the future? Glad to know that there's 5.2 million that's in underspend right now that we could use. But is there any, any conversations that you want to shed light on that help us identify in real time what underspend could look like so we can better program in future years? Again, recognizing to Jennifer's point, that's not a long-term solution. But it sure seems like when there's millions of dollars in underspend, it's important for us to know that as, as funders as well.
Thanks, Budget Chair. It's a great question. The Regional Homelessness Authority is not part of the city's financial monitoring program because it doesn't use our systems. So I do know that HSD has been working really hard in trying to improve the information flow between our two entities. So I'd have to ask for HSD to respond with any additional details they have. And that's probably best for a follow-up conversation to see what, what kind of budget monitoring RHA has that they've implemented.
I think I'll just add that, as you know, CEO Helen has been really vocal about their operations. They have new financial leadership as well. And so we do anticipate having stronger communication that has documentation verifying what's being reported on a regular cadence. And that's something that we came into agreement with. And so we will see improvements moving forward. But if you'd like specifics, happy to follow up with you.
I would also, I'm sorry. I would note that there are different types of underspend. What is primarily, you know, there's underspend where an agency is contracted for a certain amount of money and they just, for whatever reason, are not able to spend that within a given period of time. In this particular case, there was money added in the 2024 budget for three types of programs. And they assumed, actually, Councilmember Miskata, you referenced this earlier today. The budget assumed a full year of operational cost as if those new programs would launch on January 1. That didn't happen. And so they're, you know, either going to launch later this year or perhaps early the following, early 2024. So this is a case where a full year of operational cost was assumed when in fact, operations began later than, later than, there was not a full year of operational cost. So that's the kind of underspend that can also just be identified through good conversation and understanding for new funds where the NOFA, or you know, where the the funds are in terms of being deployed.
Okay, thank you for flagging this item. And yeah, I'd look forward to that. Any additional structural information you have would be, of course, appreciated. Okay, let's move on.
All right, oh, next slide. Okay, this second contextual issue relates to a CBA that was passed by council in for the 2023 adopted budget, which addressed a proposed expansion of the Unified Care Team. So in the 2023 adopted budget, there was a significant expansion proposed for the Unified Care Team, which included six new system navigators. Through this CBA, council moved $1.2 million from, from HSD to the King County Regional Homelessness Authority and reduced the number of new proposed Hope Team system navigators from six to one. Additionally, the CBA established a proviso for 1.2 million that prohibited spending until HSD and KCRHA had executed an agreement. In the event that such agreement cannot be reached, the appropriation would remain with HSD and the executive and council would discuss next steps. In September, the executive did notify council that HSD would retain 812,000 and hire five new system navigators using existing, existing position authority because an agreement had not been reached. $400,000 will remain with, will remain with KCRHA as they develop a new tool to track real-time shelter vacancies. And I will stop here.
Okay, thank you for flagging this. I think, you know, we're all a little bit disappointed in this, and I'm sure that that's a sentiment that's shared by the department as well. And the stakeholders and probably even KCRHA, there was a lot of work that went into this last year. And the mayor's office was included in that. So I want to appreciate the way in which we were able to get to shared agreement on what the vision could look like. And the theme that we all talked about was solutions beyond removals and having these individuals be housed within KCRHA and having the lists, the, the by-name list be housed within KCRHA was integral to that. I, as I understand it, the list concept is going to remain at KCRHA. And the staffing then, or the, the funding would be transferred over. And you already have position authority within the department. I think it's important to keep the, the really fine-tuned statement of legislative intent and the, the CBA that we were, the council budget action that we worked on last year at the ready for when KCRHA has the capacity to take this back on. Because there was a lot of really good thinking about how we can care for people and also separate care for the land and the amenities needed onsite into two different categories. So I would love for, you know, just for historical record to maintain that CBA and really underscore the importance of us coming back to that at some point when KCRHA has additional capacity to take on those responsibilities that we delineated. Councilmember Herbold was part of that discussion. Councilmember Herbold had something to add to that.
Yeah, I, I, I think I missed explanation for why King County Regional Homelessness Authority is not hiring the regional coordinators.
Chris, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, absolutely. So there were, you know, months of conversation between the executive, HSD and RHA. And ultimately, RHA confirmed that they would not be able to take on this work at the time, at this time, which is why the, the $800,000 will be retained by HSD to continue supporting the Unified Care Team through the regional coordinator positions.
I'm sorry, that you just, I heard you restate the scenario, the situation, but not the reason. Why are they unable to take up? If we're providing the funding, why are they unable to do the hire? Because the, the, the reason, I think, why we wanted King County RHA to hire these staff people is because King County RHA has a different approach for, for addressing unsanctioned encampments. And I think we wanted to embrace that approach. So just, I, I would really like to understand, given that the funding is, is provided, why they are unable to use those fundings, that, that funding for the purpose it was provided.
I'm happy to jump in. I think the bottom line is they just, they don't have the capacity. And so it wasn't that we couldn't come to an agreement. It's just that the agreement was that they were unable to do this at this time. And so HSD is stepping up to And so HSD is stepping up to support the broader citywide effort.
Follow-up question, Councilmember Herbold.
I don't know what doesn't have the capacity means. Usually, when somebody says doesn't have the capacity, they mean they don't have the resources to do the thing. And we've provided the resources, and so I just would like to get a little bit finer, a finer answer on what they mean by, I mean, not having the capacity. We know that, for instance, they're doing layoffs and they're moving some of the people out of positions that are being reduced into other positions. I don't know, you know, this may not be an apples-to-apples situation, but perhaps some of the positions that folks are being laid off from, could those individuals could go and fill these positions with the funding that the city is providing? And if for some reason that's not possible to happen, I just would really like to get a little bit in the weeds to understand why.
I'm happy to follow up with RHA, if you'd like. My understanding from what we've heard through the negotiations is that they are getting back to some basics and looking at their operations and cleaning up some of the things that need to be strengthened. And so they're dealing with a lot, absolutely, and so there's some leadership challenges. As you said, there are some decisions on emphasizing their administrative, their basic function of being a strong funder and a partner to existing community-based organizations. And so they said they don't have the capacity to take this on. But if we would like to have a clear statement from KCRHA, happy to follow up with them. But it's really supporting them to strengthen, to work on all the things that CEO Howell has been publicly stating.
Okay, let's see what our other colleagues have to say. I would underscore the Vice Chair's request for additional information. If you're able to get that from KCRHA, just to follow up on your suggestion, Director Kim. Councilmember Lewis, please.
Thank you so much. You know, I just want to say to this exchange about these capacity challenges at KCRHA, as someone who's intimately involved right now in a lot of discussions with the KCRHA processes to do a lot of internal reform and recalibration with Director Howell, that I would first say that I think Director Howell's doing a great job of getting the authority back to basics, as Director Kim was stating, which, you know, as I understand it, and, you know, sorry if there's someone from KCRHA watching, and I restate what that, I state what that means inaccurately. But my understanding of that has been really getting to that core issue of making sure contracts are getting done and getting out on time, making sure that programming and initiatives that are, that are superfluous to that mission are put on hold or canceled until that core mission is mastered and can be relied upon as a platform to do that contracting. And I think that we've seen a lot of good work from the authority over the summer in really taking great strides to inspire confidence in policymakers that they are making those hard decisions. You know, I don't think it was an easy decision for them to end Partnership for Zero in the System Navigator Program, but it was a very honest decision, and it's something they had to do. The fundamentals of what had been pitched by the previous CEO just could not pencil and could not work. And I think looking to drop those kind of more experimental projects and focus on the basics is something that we've been advocating for as a council for years, whenever we have providers coming to us every spring banging down our door because they can't get their contracts from KCRHA, and KCRHA's time seems to be occupied with less essential and more frivolous projects. As relates to this, you know, I mean, I'm just going to say, I mean, I think that, like, just speaking as a district council member, I think the Unified Care Team has been a very responsive and effective resource. I mean, I want to lift up the work of Deputy Mayor Washington, lift up the work of the Executive Office and HSD for creating a service that's been responsive, that is providing a conduit from encampments to shelter. And it can always, of course, be improved. But what I would just say, state here is I do think that this approach of doing this work internally to HSD right now is the best course of action for us to avoid confusion, disappointment, and frustration with the regional authority, you know, six months, eight months down the road in terms of the service being effectively done at this current time. I think that once we see the conclusion of these efforts that we're engaged in with CEO Howell, with the governing board and our other partners in really truing up a lot of the things to make KCRHA more effective, I think that we should definitely reexamine what we are trying to do here. But I do not know that in this, at this current time, to the points that have been made about capacity, I just think there's a bunch of things that need to be done before KCRHA is in a position where they can take on this work and that it can be responsive and effective in the way we would expect it to be as policymakers and council members. So that's just a little context from the discussions I'm involved in. And I think for this budget cycle, I don't think this is something that, where we should be looking to integrate it completely with KCRHA.
Okay, Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Herbold. It was a good question there. I think the capacity issues have already been addressed. I don't sit on the homelessness committee. I just have a lot of work because I am intimately involved with how the city is responding to homelessness, in part from my work on Ballard Commons and Woodland Park, currently down on Leary Way and Leary Avenue. What I can tell you, I just want to speak, the capacity issues with Regional Homelessness Authority have been spoken to and are accurate. And what you and Chair Miskata said is also accurate, that we want the Regional Homelessness Authority to do this work. And when they have, and it's not a financial capacity, it's a time and management capacity once they've got the contracting and downtown areas with Partnership for Zero reset. I think that they will have the management capacity to take on this work. Until then, it's important that we, as the city, do our part to be able to stand up these teams and turn them over to King County Regional Homelessness Authority when that moment comes. Talking about the approach that you mentioned, we all, I believe, think that King County Regional Homelessness Authority's approach is the right approach. It's proven, it's tested. It creates the outcomes that we want because it doesn't push people down the street, it gets people inside. And with Ballard Commons, with Woodland Park, with the work down on Leary right now, I'm watching as the Unified Care Team and Evergreen Treatment Services Reach are working to, with a by-name list, a needs assessment and shelter placement to resolve the encampments there. And that is the exact same approach that the King County Regional Homelessness Authority uses. So I just wanted to uplift that, that just because it's not the Regional Homelessness Authority doesn't mean that the approach isn't being used because I'm seeing the city use that approach. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson and Director Kim, I'm not sure if that hand's old, I can come back to you after Councilmember Nelson. Okay, great.
I just want to say that I supported the mayor's plan last year and opposed the move out of HSD's budget and over to KCRHA and even pulled that item out. It was HSD 35C for a special vote, I mean, for a standalone vote. So I think that this is the direction that we need to go for the reasons that I stated last year, which is that bringing them inside or keeping them inside back then is the best way to implement the vision of the regional approach that the mayor was trying to get at last year. Thanks.
Hey, let's get moving.
All right, final contextual issue. Next slide, please. This third issue relates to the expiration of 2.5 million in one-time funding for tiny house villages that is paying for ongoing operating costs. Currently, Lehigh is receiving this funding and using it to provide behavioral health counseling and support and to assist Lehigh staff with crisis management and de-escalation. And they are doing this at eleven existing tiny home villages and one enhanced shelter with a total of 483 units. And again, this is one-time funding that is slated to expire at the end of this year.
Any comments on this item? Councilmember Lewis, please go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Miskata. I just want to speak to how essential this is. It's not enough for us to just have tiny houses. We need to make sure that those tiny houses are adequately supported and that they have the services for the acuity of need that we are seeing on the street. This has been an investment that has been continuing to be reauthorized in a one-time way year over year, but I think we need to continue to look as an institution at ways to make this more standard and permanent, given the stubborn consistency of these challenges and the public health challenges so many people experiencing homelessness have. And it's dramatically increased the utility of these tiny house villages and our ability to make referrals that are more broadly acceptable to a bigger contingent of people. So I just want to flag that this is really important and just making sure that we're continuing to focus on ways to prioritize this investment, even though it is a significant investment, it's a very critical one that, you know, increases public safety, saves lives and helps people get the services they need.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Okay, let's keep, let's keep going here.
Next slide, please. We have two slides left, and they are in regards to budget legislation. One piece of budget legislation would be council-generated legislation that would require that any appropriation for wage equity be used to increase the wages of workers at contracting agencies. In addition, and that such an increase would be in addition to any increases for inflationary adjustments. Additionally, the legislation would provide contracting and reporting requirements regarding the wage equity appropriations. And the options are to pass, amend and pass, or do not pass.
Any additional comments on that? Thank you for outlining those options.
And then the final slide, I will turn it, oh, sorry, were there any questions?
I don't think.
Okay, final slide, I will pass it back to Ann.
Great, thanks, Jen.
The other piece of legislation that was submitted along with the budget is legislation that would create a new opioid proceed settlement fund. This would allow the city to track the accrual and disbursement of all revenues from opioid settlements, including potentially future settlements. Designated fund would increase the city's ability to provide oversight, monitoring, and reporting of its use of these revenues. Absent this new fund, the opioid settlement revenues would probably accrue to the general fund, and it would be harder to view them in isolation and to understand what they were funding. Options for council members, pass this legislation? Amend and pass this legislation, or do not pass the legislation?
Thank you again. Any comments on this? Okay. Okay, colleagues, I think that is the last slide of the Central Staff. The last one is just questions. Okay, thanks to both Ann and Jen for that overview that spanned the morning and the afternoon. Appreciate the items that you've teed up here and would again encourage our colleagues to take a look at some of those documentaries. Maybe the shortest one is a frontline PBS one about the fentanyl crisis and the way in which these companies directly targeted the general population and especially folks who just needed pain management and got people addicted to opioids and fentanyl. Would, well, fentanyl is an opioid, but would encourage people to take a look at that because, you know, we do want to be really good stewards of these dollars, and I think we have a responsibility to correct the wrongs of those corporations. They are paying a fine because of that targeted attack on community members. And I don't know that some of the strategies that have been outlined today really get at the heart of how we prevent people from dealing with this crisis repeatedly and would encourage us to collectively think about how we utilize those dollars. And if siling off the funds and ensuring that they're protected for that use in the future helps, then that's great. But look forward to more discussion about that soon. Madam Clerk, could you please read up item number three into the record? Thank you very much to HSD and Central Staff for covering that item, and we'll just keep going here.
Agenda item three, Office of Arts and Culture for briefing and discussion.
Excellent. And I saw my colleague, Councilmember Morales, I believe, this is within your purview. I will happily offer you a chance to weigh in if you'd like to chat about arts and culture and before we turn it over to Deputy Mayor Wong and the crew here, who's here to provide some technical feedback, of course. But Jasmine Moraha is teed up from Central Staff to walk us through the presentation. Councilmember Morales, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I had to adjust my blinds because now the sun is shining right in my eyes. Good afternoon, colleagues. Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to offer some remarks. I want to say, as the representative for the most culturally diverse district, I hear from constituents and from small businesses, from folks all the time about the need to make sure that we're investing in our neighborhoods, in our neighborhood businesses across the city, in addition to downtown. And so while our downtown core is absolutely important, it's equally important that we are investing where our neighbors live and work. Our creative economy is a big part of Seattle's economy, as you all know, and we've been investing in the downtown core for years. I've seen the positive impacts of what small investments can do when we fund all of our communities and not just one. So, you know, the chair was mentioning the Equitable Development Initiative. Already, a lot of the work that happens through that initiative happens in the Central District, in the South End. And so equity really is going to be one of my prioritizing principles as we're talking about this budget. It means prioritizing investments in communities that are underserved. So before we move into the budget presentation, I do think it's important to, oh dear, I had a letter that I want to just briefly read a few remarks from the Seattle Arts Commission. I think it's important to put their voice on the record here, too. And it is in response to the mayor's proposed budget. First, they are very pleased about the funding for HOPE Core, pleased to see a budget adjustment to address inflation, and noted several arts programs, arts funding programs. And also mentioned, as I think we will be talking about a lot in this process, that this is the first inflationary adjustment in 12 years. So that's something we will, that is appreciated and clearly a conversation we're going to have to keep having. And then, thirdly, as you may know, arts commissioners have been in conversation. This is regarding the purchase of Cinerama. Neither the Arts Commission nor the Office of Arts and Culture were made aware that there were excess funds that were being considered for an arts-focused grant in the city. And so there is a request that in the future, both the Office of Arts and Culture and the Seattle Arts Commission play an integral role in shaping an equitable process for distributing surplus funds to arts organizations and individuals. And I think the point here really is that the department has worked hard over the last several years to create a grant-making structure that is equitable and that really centers the voices of folks who have typically been marginalized, particularly as it relates to city funding. And so there's just a request for making sure that there's a fair and equitable opportunity for city support. And I thank you for allowing me to put that on the record. And I just want to say, you know, again, as we go into this section of the budget, I'm very interested in making sure that we are centering equity and that we're centering communities that are not downtown necessarily, and that could also really benefit from the work that we're doing at the council. So thank you very much, Chair, and I will have questions as we go through the report, but wanted to share that and appreciate the chance to have some opening remarks.
Okay, excellent. So Jasmine, why don't you walk us? Okay, excellent. So Jasmine, why don't you walk us through and if there's questions, please, folks, go ahead and raise your hand. And of course, we'd love to have any clarifying comments from the executive team as well, but let's go ahead and go through.
Great. Thank you all so much. My name is Jasmine Marwaha and I'm from Council Central Staff. And I'll be presenting the Office of Arts and Culture Budget Overview. The Office of Arts and Culture Arts 2024 Proposed Budget Adjustments would increase Arts' budget by $4 million compared to the 2024 endorsed budget, as shown in the slide. The department is funded by the city's admissions tax, which go towards the Arts and Culture Fund. And the adjustments reflect increased projected admission tax revenues relative to last year's forecast. As there continues to be increasing demand for entertainment activities in Seattle as we recover from the pandemic, and so there's more money in the fund. $3.6 million of the $4 million is proposed in proposed adjustments are one-time expenditures. And there are no ongoing FTEs proposed to be added. Unless there are questions at this point, we can go to the next slide. Yeah. The first issue Central Staff identified relates to just the scale of their proposed adjustments. Twenty-three percent increase in a department's budget we thought was just worth calling out. And in particular, about $3 million of the proposed expenditures represent new or expanded programming. And as noted in my memo, these new or expanded programs include $1 million for public space activation downtown with a focus on King Street Station and nearby cultural partners. A million dollars for a one-year extension of Hope Corps, also focused on downtown activations. And Hope Corps is a program that connects under an unemployed artist with paid work opportunities. And then there's $764,000 to support Seattle Center's spoke life and festal programming. And $150,000 for a temporary graffiti specialist. So council may wish to repurpose, scale, or provide further direction for these proposed adjustments to advance other council priorities in the arts. So your options are to reduce or eliminate proposed appropriations in favor of the priorities that are consistent with the permissible uses of the admissions tax revenue. There, or you could impose proviso on proposed appropriations to ensure that they align with other council priorities, such as greater investments in neighborhoods at high risk of displacement. Or no change.
Thank you. I'm not seeing additional hands on this one. I do, I guess I might just ask about the website. Sure. I'm looking at this correctly, 270,000 in communication support. Is there urgency on this item? The price tag for a website seems higher than I would anticipate, so any additional comments on that would be appreciated.
Yeah, my understanding is the entire 270,000 is not for just the website development. That there's a portion of that that is for a temporary web designer. And then the rest is for more general communication support that's ongoing.
Okay, and Deputy Mayor Wong, would you like to add something before I go to Councilmember Purple?
Yes, thank you, Budget Chair and Councilmembers. I just want to make sure to introduce, we have our new interim Director for Arts, who I don't think has actually appeared before you in any capacity before. So I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that she's on. Director Gogun Kayam comes to us from Minneapolis and she's very new, has been in office not too long, just a few weeks here. And I'm sure she'd be happy to give a little bit of intro of herself, but also to explain and answer some of those questions, such as the question about what the need is for the website and the purpose of that, if you'd like to hear from her.
All right, well, welcome Director and sorry for a somewhat you know, hybrid approach to our usual committee meetings. We are excited to have you here and have appreciated seeing all of the materials that came with your confirmation. So very thrilled to have you. And of course, as we open up here, if you would like to say anything, you're welcome to, and then I'll go to Councilmember Purple.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and Council President Huares, it's a pleasure to be here. Just a little bit about my background, as Deputy Mayor Wong mentioned, I've been here for about three weeks now and still grounding myself. I've been, it's been a very welcoming experience from staff in arts as well as my colleagues in the city, and I'm thrilled to be here for the first time talking to you. I come from the city of Minneapolis as the former Director of Arts, Culture and the Creative Economy. And I come with a background in grant-making, public art, administration, arts-based community development, creative economy, with a focus on racial equity within the creative sector. And with specialized experience in integrating artists within city government systems for the purposes of civic engagement, racial equity and policy development. So those are all the things that I'm here with, equipped to, and looking forward to working with you all. Also joining me today is my Budget Manager, Ally McGeehee, who's also here if we need her to answer questions. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Welcome. Thank you so much for sharing that. And I know that we received a lot of notes of appreciation from the Chair. As you heard from our Councilmember Morales and also from members of the staff within the Arts Department, so congrats. Councilmember Herble, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. Wanted to tie this conversation to the requirements of Seattle Municipal Code as it relates to ad tax and several ordinances that guide us to where we're at now. In 2002, this was, I believe, the first year that we required that a minimum of 20% of ad tax revenue go to the Arts Office. That was increased in 2009 to 75% of ad tax revenue going to the Arts Office. And then, I think, in maybe 2016, it increased from 75% to 80%. And now this is a municipal requirement that the 80% of the ad tax revenue go to support the Arts Office. And so I'm just very interested to understand how the, well, how what is in the proposed budget relates to that municipal code requirement and how the options that are identified here would be would still be consistent with that legal obligation. And also, before I take an answer to those questions, would like to just respond to the Chair of the Committee with Oversight of Arts, some of her comments about the fact that the Arts Commission was surprised and disappointed to learn that the ad tax revenue over and above what was anticipated was allocated in a way that did not take their input into consideration. And I'm just wondering whether or not a fourth option might be considered, which is perhaps to create some sort of an expectation or process legislatively amending the past the past ordinances that I referenced earlier to create what is the expectation for ad tax revenue over and above what is anticipated. Because I do believe, as relates to the Cinerama funding decision, again, that was revenue above and beyond that, which was impacted by the city ordinances. But I think it's reasonable for the Arts Commission to have expected some sort of some sort of collaboration on how to use those additional resources. And so, much like we've done with Jumpstart, we've created expectations and a spending plan and a process for how we expect overages to be used. Perhaps we might want to consider updating this ordinance that has been updated many times, but not since 2016 to address that issue.
Well, I just respond to the questions. My understanding is that the proposed adjustments do comport with the requirement for reserves. But I invite the department or CBO to correct me if I'm wrong about that. And there's also a requirement for admissions tax revenues to be spent on arts-related programs and capital expenditures that keep artists living, working and creatively challenged in Seattle. Initiatives and programs to build community through the arts and create opportunities for the public to intersect with artists and their work. And then initiatives and programs to provide art opportunities for youth in and out of school. And I think it is a question I can explore further about whether you know, if the overall question is, do these expenditures comport with the code? We can continue to look into that, whether all of these do comport with those policies.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Morales.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. I think that's probably a conversation we will have during this process is, you know, how do we put some guardrails at least around how we discuss the additional funding that has been received, given if we've reached the threshold for what gets allocated to the department. I do want to ask a couple of questions of our Director. Welcome, Director Kayem. We have not yet gone through the confirmation process. We will be doing that once we get this budget process over with. But Director Kayem and I have had a couple of great conversations. I did sit on the selection committee. And I'm very excited about our mutual interest in the intersection of the arts and neighborhood planning as it relates to the public realm and how we can take advantage of the creative sector to make sure that we are, you know, not just beautifying our neighborhoods, but really thinking intentionally about how we how we embed artists in everything that we do as a city. So I'm looking forward to our continued conversation there. I wanted to ask a couple of things. The first is about this temporary graffiti specialist. In conversations that I had with the previous Director, we were talking about, you know, the intention of creating an opportunity for people who do street graffiti and really trying to figure out how we engage them, how we allow them to tell their stories and hear their voice in a way that can also connect them maybe to an opportunity for funding to really take advantage of that creativity, but perhaps find a more productive way to use it. And so I'm wondering if that is the intent behind this temporary position or if there's something else intended for this, if you could talk about that a little bit.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Morales. Yes, actually, to your point, this is a complex problem that has many, you know, multi-pronged that needs a multi-pronged solution. And so this particular position is really attempting to go upstream in the issue. It's attempting to work in school, in educational settings, in other community settings with youth to intersect and interface and redirect, frankly, some of the more negative aspects of tagging in particular. So, you know, graffiti art itself is an art form, but there are places in which it can be destructive. So this is, this position is really specialized on mitigation and prevention.
Okay, thank you. If I might share another question. I wanted to talk a little bit about what we've addressed the admissions tax. So it's good to see that, you know, it is rebounding a little bit. I think that's a good indicator of our rebounding economy as well. And we also know that this is, you know, potentially an unstable funding source for future efforts in arts and culture. Can you, I'm trying to understand what strategic initiatives or what plans the Office of Arts and Culture has developed in response to the current increased revenue projections and how these can support sustainable growth in the creative economy in Seattle. And then I have one follow-up question after that.
Yes, so, you know, I come with a background in supporting arts organizations and individuals in building capacity. And so I think under that umbrella, what we're looking at doing is helping develop business plans, helping develop marketing solutions, really addressing sustainability across the board. It's not an easy thing to get funding for, you know, creating plans and developing long-term reprogramming, because many of organizations had to do a lot of pivoting during the pandemic. Now they're in a situation where they're 50 to 60% at capacity, so audiences aren't fully back. And in some cases, they're still not at that peak. You know, many of them are still working with federal funding and anticipating a fiscal cliff when that funding goes away. So there is a lot of instability there, whether you're a large organization, midsize, or even an individual that is a gig employee and still not having enough contracts. So the capacity building is really where I would put a lot of this future as well as current investment. And I can talk a little bit more about where that will be in, in the variety of programs we have. But our main grant funding is intended to be general operating support, where organizations can expect three years of consistent funding, so that way they can plan and build. So that is, that sort of predictability is what's needed. Sustainability is what is really needed, frankly.
So, okay, so my last question, so Councilmember Herbold and I have worked a lot over the last few years to really try to highlight the economic impact of arts and culture beyond the visual and audio mediums. I'm wondering if you can talk about how we center this sector as, particularly as OED is developing their kind of key industries work.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, there are many ways to center the sector because the sector delivers many, many products and results. I think it's important to do two things. First of all, as I mentioned, help the sector stabilize. So stabilize and fully recover from the pandemic and then help them build sustainability. And I mean that across the board. There are many institutions that, as I said, are questioning business plans because the way the programs are produced and delivered are just different nowadays. In other cases, we have had workforce transitions, especially let's say in theater. A lot of backstage staff have actually left to present at events. And so are earning more money doing high-tech events as opposed to backstage because the pandemic again pushed that. So there has been a huge transition and transformation. And if we can help them stabilize and then help them replan, revision, how they're going to move forward and then help them build. That's where I see a lot of our work, a lot of the work of the department moving forward. And then engaging the sector in producing, so, you know, creating spaces for work to be seen, engaged with and for people to come and buy tickets and participate. I also see, one last thing, a lot of integrative and cross-sector work, which is what I was indicating. There was a, there's a huge movement towards that. So artists working in community and with community on a variety of things from wellness to, you know, in terms of what we did in government policy development, there is a lot of expansion and potential there. And for example, we now get social prescriptions. So there's some such important work happening where arts are integrated into that type of work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is there any additional comments or questions on this slide? Okay, seeing that, let's go ahead and move on. I think we have about an hour, hour and a half left, and we have one more presentation as well after this. But I want to make sure that I can keep my column with us, so let's keep going.
Okay, so the next issue relates to, I think, some comments that have already been said. You know, as we always talked about, and the mission tax revenues are increasing, they're also potentially unstable. And we also have a unique opportunity. And we also have a unique opportunity with new leadership in the department. So with all these factors, council may want to consider providing specific direction and resources for a strategic planning process concerning the use and priorities of the Arts and Culture Fund. This could include policies or predefined priorities related to to funding decisions when higher than anticipated revenues come in, as talked about earlier. And my understanding is that arts was already considering undergoing such a process, but there are not yet dedicated funds for this effort. So the options on on this slide could help communicate council's expectations for the strategic planning process, such as, you know, providing direction in a statement of legislative intent to indicate an expected scope of work for the process, potentially a survey of best practices in other jurisdictions, or racial equity analysis, stakeholder engagement, among other considerations. And then an additional option is to increase one time appropriations from fund balance in the Arts and Culture Fund for this effort to provide transparent and dedicated funding for things like consultation and community engagement. Or no change.
Thank you so much. Any comments on these items? Okay. Could not could not tell if you're looking for a hand button there or unmute button, Councilmember Morales. But, of course, you're welcome. Okay, okay, Council, Deputy Mayor Wong.
I was just going to comment that arts is starting to think about this process. And as we, as Director and was brought on board, we're working very closely to talk about what is the future direction of art strategically? Where should it be? We we know, I mean, probably everybody knows that that the county is considering their sales tax that would have an impact on arts funding. There may be different factors with the state. So what is the role of our Department of Arts and Culture? And part of that will have to be strategically thinking through what priorities exist and how we can best support arts organizations and individuals throughout the city in doing so. And I know Dr. Kayem has been thinking a lot about this. And so if there's questions on what that may look like, please do feel free to to ask her because it's something that is is not new. And I think we're fully aligned with the issue identification here on it needing to be done.
Councilmember Morales, did you have something before I go to Councilmember Lewis?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to speak to that a little bit. As I mentioned, one of the previous conversations that the director and I had, she did talk about the need for and I'm sure it would be part of this strategic planning, but the need for sort of an economic evaluation of arts in Seattle. So what is the what kind of employment are folks getting? What does the pay look like? You know, how do we make sure that there is business support for creative workers? And by that, we mean, you know, apprenticeship opportunities, placement with with intermediaries, and also making sure that we're disaggregating the data so that it's really clear what the sectors are and who is engaging in different parts of the of the creative economy. So I think that's important work for us to really get an understanding. We already have a sense that this is a huge the arts, the creative sector plays a huge role in our economy. But but having, you know, a little bit more information can help guide the direction of a strategic planning process. So I think that would be really valuable information for us to have.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you so much. Looking at this idea of a strategic planning process, Deputy Mayor Wong just alluded to this a little bit, but there is this discussion right now at the Regional Policy Committee and at the King County Council around the adoption of the cultural access, one tenth of one percent sales tax. And I I do only raise that to to just maybe ask a question here of how we envision you know, how we envision the strategic plan taking into account that that regional collaboration with four culture where there is a lot of overlap and in eligible funding, like obviously through that cultural access, arts groups in Seattle are going to be receiving a significant amount of of support. And I do wonder to what extent our our Office of Arts and Culture and Four Culture could could have an integrated strategic planning process to make sure that we're maximizing all of our resources, like our budget contribution, all of the county's budget contribution, and if that is sort of envisioned in this idea of doing the strategic plan, making sure that we're we're hooking it up at the at the hip to what Four Culture is doing.
Thank you so much. Good ideas for future consideration and seeing nods from central staff. Anything to add on this before we move forward? Okay, Director?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, I just want to be clear about the intention of the strategic planning, just so that we're all on the same page. The first, you know, because I'm new in into the department, of course, one one of the priorities is to review and refresh our mission, vision, values. So that's the first step that we're going to be working on. It's going to be modest. We're going to be using underspend from 2023 to bring in a consultant, work with the Arts Commission, and have some limited visioning sessions. So there's that. And then, of course, what has already been mentioned has been the changes that are coming down through the county and folk culture. I believe that needs to be a more extensive cultural planning process, meaning something that's going to be longer term, much more community engaged, and and of course, engage with elected officials as well, and be more policy directive. And that that's where I think we can talk about the more systemic collaborations, differences. Luckily, I come from a state that has this type of tax. And when that tax came through, we did have this type of conversation with system partners to talk about which areas of the economy do we, you know, are we best positioned to support versus the State Arts Board, which was the main disperser of those funds. So I think that is a very appropriate conversation. I'm in conversation right now with colleagues who are working on getting the legislation passed at the end of this year. And next year, when the funds do are released, it will be around a hundred million dollars. So it's a significant amount of money. And I think it's it's prime time for us to have that conversation.
Yeah, let's keep moving.
That concludes my presentation.
All right, that's great. Well, that is very helpful and very nice to have the input from our new director, interim director until final confirmation, but great to meet you. Thanks for being part of this initial conversation around budget analysis. And let's move on to agenda item number four. Thank you to central staff, to Deputy Mayor Wong. I don't know if you're sticking with us for this next item. No? Okay, well, thanks for joining us and have a good rest of your afternoon. We will wrap it up with the Office of Economic Development. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number four into the record?
Agenda item four, Office of Economic Development for briefing and discussion.
Excellent, thank you. And Councilmember Nelson, as you have Office of Economic Development in your committee, are there any comments that you'd like to share as you look through the proposed budget? Or any comments that you'd like to share on the department investments overall?
Yes, I'm very excited to speak to this. So we often hear that, especially in the in connection with Jump Start, that we have to act consistently with the priorities that this council has set in law. And that principle holds here, too. On August 1st, council unanimously passed Resolution 32099, which states the City of Seattle's recognition of the benefits that a strong and inclusive local economy confers upon Seattle residents and businesses alike, and endorses the Office of Economic Development's Future of Seattle Economy Investment Agenda. And that investment agenda was developed through an intentional, community-driven process to identify priority investments to advance OED's mission to build an inclusive economy in the City of Seattle. It also drives the proposed appropriations in OED's budget that are funded by the fifteen percent of the Jump Start Fund that's allocated to economic revitalization. So that's just framing what we're talking about today. I'm done.
Excellent, thank you so much. And thank you for your stewardship of the conversation earlier this year to advance the Office of Economics Development's vision around economic resilience using those Jump Start Funds. So look forward to hearing more about the proposal. Welcome to the dais, the virtual dais, to our friends from Office of Economic Development. We have Mark McEntire and the team with us, including Julie Dingly as well for technical questions. And we have with us Jasmine Marwaha, who is still with us from central staff to walk us through this presentation. Thank you very much, Jasmine. We'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm still here. So the Office of Economic Development, OED's 2024 Proposed Budget Adjustments would increase the department's budget by eight point six million dollars compared to the 2024 endorsed budget, as shown in the slide, representing thirty one point five percent increase. This net increase encompasses nine point nine million dollars in proposed expenditures from the Jump Start Economic Revitalization Funds, which I'll get into shortly in the in the next slide. But first, I'll just also note that the majority of the proposed additional expenditures are ongoing, and there are nine FTE proposed to be added. Go to the next slide if there's no questions overall on this. So, as I said, there's nine point nine million dollars in new spending. These are all listed in Attachment One to the Central Staff Memo. The proposed investments all fit into one of these five strategic pillars that you see on the screen. And as Councilmember Nelson mentioned, these are from the Future of the Seattle Economy Strategic Framework that was adopted by council resolution this past summer to guide the Jump Start Economic Revitalization Funding. Many of the proposed adjustments also advanced the mayor's Downtown Activation Plan, or DAP, about three and a half million out of the the nine point nine million in proposed OED additions have been identified as DAP investments, and they're sort of sprinkled among the different pillars. While the FSC framework provides some guidance and bounds to the spending, as you can see, the buckets are still somewhat broad, and maybe there may be differences of opinion as to what should be the balance between those pillars. So council may wish to advance other priorities that are consistent with this FSC framework. And your options are for the next slide, to reduce proposed appropriations in favor of those other priorities, or to impose a proviso on proposed appropriations to ensure that they align with with other council priorities, again, such as, you know, maybe ensuring greater investments in neighborhoods at high risk of displacement. So if there are questions at this stage, I know Councilmembers may have questions about individual line items. You know, if there are questions for central staff or OED on those specific proposed adjustments, I I think Patty can pull up the memos, Attachment One on the screen for reference.
Thanks, Jasmine. Are there any questions on these items? Okay. Um, I'll jump in with some comments. Again, I want to thank Director McIntyre. Thank you for the open communication that you had about the process for coming up with the implementation of the economic resilience section. We know last year we put a number of one time investments into the 2023 budget as placeholders to keep the funds flexible for future programming that would be ongoing programming. So excited to see this fourth and final component of of Jump Start Investments really getting the longer term blueprint into place. And I think that it, you know, just just having talked to some members of the West Seattle Chamber earlier today, we know that there is such dire need for community revitalization for directly for small businesses. But to our earlier conversation about arts and culture, people are very interested in marrying activation and resilience and public space opportunities with our commitment to the health of the local economy and the health of the population as we think about how we get folks out and interacting and also engaging with small business and the creative economy. So I'm excited to see some of these pieces move forward. I'm excited to have a better understanding of what's being proposed with some of the new investments. I think that there is some deeper dive analysis that we would like to do to have more of an understanding around some of the staffing requirements and you know, would would like to ask, and Jasmine, I'm not sure if this is something that is appropriate for me to ask of you to go through the portal, or if you have any analysis of this so far, but the timing of when some of these positions would more likely to come into fruition, right? If we're talking about passing a budget at the end of November and all of these new positions being in place on January 2nd, that might not be totally realistic. So having a better understanding by program, by position, when a when a you know, real time hire might happen, could give us a better sense of what the FTE costs are. Any analysis from that from central staff or the department?
I can go ahead and let the department answer that question.
Great, welcome, Director McIntyre.
Thanks. Thanks for having me. Good to see you all. On the matter of staffing, so OED has staffed up a lot with some of the federal recovery dollars. And so we've been working with a lot of temporary staff. And so part of our staffing growth plan has been to transition from temporary to permanent as we kind of evaluate the capacity needs and the skill set needs. And the great news is we have some really, really excellent temporary employees. And so as we add some some of the staffing, particularly for some of the administrative functions, our intent would be to make those open to internal processes with the hope that we could maybe move over some of the temporary staff into permanent. We've had success with that in a number of positions to date. Obviously, we still have to go through the HR processes. But our hope is that if we have these permanent pockets for some of the administrative positions, we could move fairly quickly in the first quarter of the year to move from temporary to permanent. Now, some of the more strategic positions, like for instance, this new idea of a of a Director of Citywide Special Events, that would probably take a little bit longer. We're currently in some discussions with some of the other departments and mayoral functions that touch special events to think about how we scope that, so we could be ready as soon as possible in the early new year to post it. Once we have, once we have clarity on pocket authority. But those might take a little longer going, leading into like Q2 of of next year. But our hope would be to move with haste to fill these positions, because as you mentioned, the need is great and and having high performing, capable staff on the team is is one of our priorities.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you very much. I'm glad that Director McIntyre spoke up a bit about some of their staffing plans. I was hoping that he would address the staffing vacancies and shortages that existed before he he took the position. Maybe he can mention that afterwards, but as it relates to the transformation of the Special Events Office that he just mentioned, this position was is a huge part of the creative economy framework outlined by OED that will transform how the city interacts with big events, which we want more of, of course, and not only from a logistical point of view, like, you know, permit processing, et cetera, but to establish policies that ensure that Seattle can be a world class city that attracts world class events that pump millions into the into the local economy. So do you want to highlight the importance of that investment? And and note that the creative economy is a foundational aspect or or component of the Downtown Activation Plan. So Mark and Ben, did you want to comment on the on the staffing situation when you took over?
Sure, I guess I'll I'll give a two part answer. So on the staffing situation, I think we talked about this when I first took the office, there was a high level of high level of turnover and high level of vacancy when I took the office. We've really made it a priority to try to build up the organization and the team culture. So we've been working with HR closely on filling the vacancies. And as I mentioned, trying to transition from kind of a lot of temporary to sustainable, sustainably funded, permanent positions. That's key to having kind of a stable organization. And we've been successful in that. We've also reorganized to make it clear about roles and responsibilities and how this how the whole team links back into the future of Seattle economy framework and try to be more transparent about how how the the office function so that people feel empowered to make decisions. And then finally, I'll just mention that that professional development and kind of continuing to build the skills of the team is one of our priorities in leadership. And that's certainly something that we've been working on and hope to continue to grow into this next year. On the second part of what Councilmember Nelson mentioned about the creative economy, there there's not necessarily a specific line item that's called out within our budget for creative economy, but I want to assure you that it is a key part of our success. We just hired James Miles into the position of Creative Economy Manager. So he's working with a team here at OED, as well as in collaboration with Office of Arts and Culture, Seattle Center, and other Office of Arts and Culture, Seattle Center, and others as we continue to build out that strategy. And then as the council member mentioned, there's a couple of key parts of DAP that are keenly related to the creative economy as well as that special events position that she mentioned. And then we still have some federal funds that are allocated towards creative economy work that we still need to deploy. So there are resources that we'll be working with on a number of creative economy functions as James gets going.
Okay, thanks. Any additional comments on this slide? Go ahead, Councilmember Nelson.
One last note on staffing. One item in the memo and in Attachment 1 is City Resource Navigation. That is colored blue with other DAP investments. However, this is, and this is one FTE for $115,000. This position is currently temporary, and we want to keep it because this is the position that I've been urging OED to formalize because it used to be something called, you know, it was part of the BAT team, business. I think it was Business Assistance Team. It's what a small business owner needs when they have a problem that when they get into a logjam, usually when it's when one department, like SDOT is saying, one thing, you have to do this first, and City Light is saying, no, you have to do this first. And so oftentimes, these small businesses, particularly small businesses that are owned by women and minority entrepreneurs, this is the problem that they often get into. And so previously, someone was able to call somebody at OED who would work the logjam through to a solution. And so that is that one particular staffing position that I think is really important for small businesses, especially when it comes to displacement reduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales.
Thank you. I think as we're talking about this particular slew of investments, I do think it's important for us to go back to the Jumpstart Spend Plan, you know, where we stated as a council our intention for the investments of this fund in that resolution to be equitably distributed throughout the city, including funding programs that service low-wage working people, families, individuals, homeless individuals, other historically marginalized communities. That is the intent of that fund of the work that we did to create this investment strategy. So when we're looking at these funds now and in the future, you know, that's the lens that I'll be examining these various proposals through. I think it's important to stress that these equitable program approaches are the core intent of Jumpstart. So this isn't a nice-to-have. This isn't something that we think would be a great idea. That is the intent behind these funds. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about each of these proposals, about how we're balancing our downtown economic recovery and deeply investing in strategies that repair the historic harm done to Black and Brown communities, you know, to the parts of town that have historically been under-invested or disinvested from. That is part of the intent behind this fund. And so I just, I think it's going to be important for us to keep saying that that needs to be a center of how we make decisions about this. I do want to talk about, I don't actually see this issue on any of the slides. So I'm wondering if I can just talk about department indirect costs. If it's on here, I missed it, so I apologize. Is, no, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So in OED's budget issue paper, a lot of the Downtown Activation Plan funding looks to be programmed as departmental indirect costs. It's contributing to $3.2 million difference between the proposed budget and what council endorsed. And there are several proposals that include new groups or programs or FTEs. So I've got a couple of questions. And Director McIntyre, that may be there for you, or maybe there for Jasmine. But I'm interested in the rationale for these being considered indirect costs. I'm interested if you can summarize how, so to quote, "fund costs associated with management of the department and administration or other administrative costs, such as external rent and operating supplies and services, are explained in the mayor's proposed adjustment book." So there are things that seem to be, I'm just interested in what's considered an indirect cost.
I'll have to apologize. I'm feeling a little out of depth. I'm not exactly sure to what you're referring in terms of like the balance of indirect versus direct costs and how that seems out of whack. Jasmine, can you help me out here?
It might be referring to the fact that many of the DAP investments are under the Leadership and Administration BSL because OED only has two BSLs, either Business Services or Leadership and Administration. And because the community engagement money in particular for the DAP investments doesn't really fit into direct business services, it was put under, Leadership and Administration may have been coded as an indirect cost. But I can also investigate that further.
Thank you.
Okay.
I had some clarity, maybe.
Excuse me, Councilmember Morales, I just wanted to make sure you were done there.
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Take a pause. Sounds good. Councilmember Nelson, please go ahead.
I'll have to read that bit a little bit more closely. But when it comes to external costs, it could be referring to costs that fall under the third pillar of the Future of Seattle Economy Agenda, Investment Agenda, which is building BIPOC community wealth. And under this category fall programs like Seattle Restored. And for that program, we pay the building owner rent to allow, to enable artists and and small businesses owned by people of color to exist and increase their revenue and also have a role in revitalizing downtown, for example. It could also be part of, it could also be referring to the money that is allocated in the Capital Access Program, which provides for very low-interest loans for businesses located in areas that are undergoing rapid gentrification. Again, entrepreneurs that are really struggling to get access to capital from traditional means. It could be the Tenant Improvement Program. And so what I'm saying is that there are so many of these these programs that are in OED's funding in budget that are directly related to equity and advancing and helping our small businesses that are the most vulnerable survive and grow in Seattle.
Okay, thank you.
And that money, and this money, these adjustments look like a big, these look like a lot of adjustments, but these were held in reserve last year until the Future of Seattle Economy Investment Agenda could be wrapped up this year.
Director Dingly.
Thanks. I just wanted to confirm what Jasmine spoke about. She had it absolutely correct. So I wanted to thank her for that really clear explanation.
Oh, excellent. Thank you for that. Councilmember Morales.
Well, I think it just goes back to the thing we were talking about yesterday, which is we need to get much clearer on what indirect costs mean because it sounds like many of the things that Councilmember Nelson just mentioned are actually programmatic, you know, sort of delivery and not indirect cost as we typically think of them. So I do think, you know, it's a conversation that we, it's a clarity that we are going to need as we go through this process.
Yeah, I support that too. And I think that it's all in the spirit of transparency and accountability, ensuring that the planned investments have, of course, the support that they need to carry it out year over year, but that there's clear alliance with or adherence to the spend plan as directed and the values envisioned that is in the codified spend plan. I think that there's a lot that is. And then there's just some questions as Councilmember Morales is articulating that we need to keep diving into. Director Dingly, did you have clarification at all?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we can, we'll follow up and are happy to provide a little bit more detail on that. I think it's also, you know, not creating a new budget summary level because there was one-time funding involved. So there are different sort of technical choices that we can talk about, but happy to provide whatever level of detail is helpful.
Great, great, yes. And one day, we will have that budget book that just does a simple piece of legislation and strikes last year's investment and includes the future year's investment in one day. Central Staff, Jasmine Rahah.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that I think this is a longstanding issue that we've talked about with the department in terms of the BSLs not being quite transparent. And I think that there's definitely more to be done here.
Great. We will add that to our later-in-the-year discussions and probably items that need to be taken up systemically year over year, but appreciate that. I have a few questions too. And Jasmine, I know that this is the bulk of your presentation, right? So some of these line items are not delineated on the slide, but are included in your memo and in the conversations that we've had with central staff, I think have been summarized in that memo well. I am very much, again, thrilled to have a blueprint for how we move forward. And I know that the concept was to have this Economic Revitalization Plan configured sometime in 2021, maybe. So thank you, Director McIntyre, for making it happen, giving us the blueprint 2024 and beyond is something that we can all now sink our teeth into and continue to work on. I am interested, though, in figuring out more about how we identified the portion of Jumpstart Economic Resilience Dollars that are being directed to downtown versus economic hubs around the city. If I look at this, it does appear that about $9.9 million of the Economic Resilience Bucket is identified for Downtown Activation Plan to the tune of $4.7 million. So about half of the Economic Resilience Bucket looks like it's going downtown to the Activation Plan, though I think there are some categories that may provide benefits to other areas of the city as well. So I'd be very interested in having a better understanding of how we're supporting some of the activation in other economic hubs as well as downtown. That's something that maybe we can do a follow-up with you about to ensure that these regional economic neighborhood hubs that we have continue to receive activation, direct support, arts and culture infusion, et cetera. Jasmine?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify in case councilmembers were trying to add up all the numbers. So $3.5 million out of the OED expenditures are for Downtown Activation Plan. In addition, there are other economic, Jumpstart Economic Revitalization Funds that are being put to the Downtown Activation Plan. There's $1 million in SDOT for activation, and there's, I believe, a position in OPCD as well. So just in case folks are trying to reconcile the $3.5 million in my memo with the overall Jumpstart Economic Revitalization Investments.
Great, thank you. And again, really excited about the concept of creating healthy, safe, vibrant spaces that support local businesses and get our community engaged and having greater activation by having, you know, people on the streets, but also getting more people into local shops. That's really good for economic resilience as well as the health of our community. And so specifically, maybe we can have another conversation about how those activation dollars can be deployed to certain areas that have had longstanding interest in increased pedestrianization, specifically Capitol Hill. Small businesses and residents have talked a lot about wanting to pedestrianize. And believe me, there would still be delivery and options for people who are residents to move vehicles as well, but additional pedestrianization options. So is that something that's embedded in this process? And if not, that's something that I'd be interested in really drawing out for other economic hubs across the city as well. Director McIntyre?
Thanks. Yeah, I think those types of ideas are exactly what we work with our community partners to try to figure out what the strategy is, what the benefit would be, and then how the city might play a key role in making those things happen. So that's part of the reason we really focus on developing those relationships, on-the-ground relationships with organizations, with businesses, to really understand what their wants and needs are in the now, but also try to forecast where they want to go as a neighborhood business district and how the city can try to invest in the capacity necessary to make those choices, but then also work with other departments that might intersect with it, such as SDOT when we're thinking about pedestrianization or activating streetscapes, or the Department of Neighborhoods or OPCD as we think about sub-area planning as part of the comp plan. So I think we have a variety of tools at our disposal, but it really does come down to having strong relationships in those neighborhoods and understanding what the businesses, the workers, and the community members want and need and where they want to go with their business district, and then us facilitating and bringing to bear some of the resources we have.
Okay.
I just call out as one of the line items. So right now, coming out of the pandemic, we still have a lot of questions about space, especially like commercial space, like vacant storefronts. So that's part of the reason it's a priority in downtown with our Seattle Restored Program. But also, we have some money in there to do some analysis of retail and ground floor space in some of our priority equity districts because we really do need to have an inventory of kind of what's in the neighborhood, but then also understand what additional ground floor amenities and businesses those neighborhoods might want. And by having a comprehensive strategy that's specific to the neighborhood, not assuming that they're all the same, but really embracing their differences and unique characteristics, that's going to allow us to do the matchmaking and bring to bear some of our other programs, like Tenant Improvement and the Business Community Ownership Fund, to really make sure that we're getting those businesses that people want to see into those spaces, have the right mix in the neighborhoods, and then set them up for long-term success, which ideally leads to intergenerational wealth creation.
That's great. I have one last question. Oh, Councilmember Morales, do you want to jump in first?
Yeah. I appreciate the remarks about Seattle Restored. And, you know, like, this is a great program, as you were saying, Director McIntyre, to really activate vacant storefronts. You know, there are, I think in the BIP, it included two to four. I don't know if you can share what areas you're anticipating growing that. But I do want to say that, you know, this is sort of an example of why equity in this program is so important, right? Because equitable growth of how we activate storefronts is key. It's important to tourism. It's important to drawing folks to a particular neighborhood. And I will say right now, you know, Rainier Avenue is really, you know, activating storefronts is key there because it also prevents harmful impacts, right? We've seen a lot of storefronts on Rainier that sit vacant for a long time. And then they burn down. And so it's really important for us to be intentional about making sure that the resources that we have here are getting deployed out in our neighborhoods too because our neighborhoods are asking every day, where's ours? Where's our commitment for investment? Where's our, you know, revitalization? And so I just, you know, I do think that this is an important program. I've been to a couple of these in Pioneer Square. It's beautiful to reactivate a space to have entrepreneurs who are so excited about having an actual brick-and-mortar place for their goods and services. And, you know, our neighborhoods are really looking for a similar sort of support and investment. So excited to see that expanded.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you so much and really appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on some of these post-COVID revitalization plans. I mean, I would just point out and maybe ask of the department if there's an effort to do this, that downtown produces an inordinate amount of the tax revenue that we take in that supports all the other facets of the general fund. And indeed, I think that it's likely a significant portion of our increased general fund growth above forecast estimates. And we'll see what October holds, but the last couple of forecasts had general fund coming in higher than we had initially anticipated. It's probably due in part to the work that we've been doing to reinvigorate and reinvent downtown so that that general fund support is there. But going forward, I think that we should more explicitly see if there's a way we can quantify the revenue impacts of the economic development. quantify the revenue impacts of the economic development um efforts that we're doing downtown to to restore and reinvigorate uh its central role in the regional economy. Um, because I I do think when we're talking about having the resources to pay for essential services and reinvest in neighborhood commercial districts, of which I have several in in my district in Magnolia and Queen Anne, um and even in Interbay. Uh, having resources to do that is is also contingent on a strong downtown when downtown sneezes, the rest of the city gets a cold, for lack of a better term. So um, I would like to look at a way that we can um try to make like a a reciprocal relationship to the recovery of downtown and the reinvestment into the needed um uh neighborhood commercial district improvements that um that my colleagues have uh have mentioned that are essential um to our recovery as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Morales, a follow up to that? Okay, old hand, great. Okay, uh, I think I have one more question and other colleagues, excuse me, if other colleagues have questions as well, um, we'll get to those before we adjourn here. My last question, and again, thanks to the department for being willing to field some of these questions that does feel like these are more directed at the department than other presentations have been. So, thank you. Um, as it relates to the Jumpstart Continued Community Engagement for the Mayor's Downtown Activation Plan, I think the big question that we have is uh how we can be um effective users of limited public funds that we have in this moment. I know that many of us are concerned around the lack of um or the the need for outreach and engagement regarding the comprehensive plan. I get that's in a different department. But that some of the funding was reduced for the community outreach and engagement related to the comprehensive plan that's coming next year. I'm curious whether there's an opportunity with the funds that have been identified, um and albeit from Jumpstart and not sure of the direct nexus there, but not arguing that point right now. Um, given that there's additional outreach and engagement um funds included here and the likely need to support comp plan funding for next year. Would it be possible to that, does the timeline and the outreach outreach activities and the stakeholders that are being contemplated align in a way that there could be a a two for one opportunity here to really try to solicit feedback and engagement as it relates to the comp plan and um and maybe Jasmine as well. I see you nodding. Um, if there's thoughts from you. If there is any opportunity that this funding will support any um external contractors, or are we just talking about internal to the city?
Uh, I love where your head's at, and we are thinking along the same lines. We've had such a good partnership with OPCD. Well, for for a while, but particularly on some of this downtown stuff, because they are leading the downtown sub area work as part of the comp planning. So we have regular meetings with them to kind of share information and coordinate our approaches, our messages, who we're reaching out to. And then you've really hit it on the head, like we've been able to work with them as we've been doing some of the DAP planning uh uh outreach earlier this year, and then now as we're moved into operations and continuing to get that feedback loop from different communities and out there and about like at the parks, big day of play and at the pickleball tournaments, kind of gathering and soliciting information. We're doing that in partnership with OPCD. So like when they have a focus group that's working with a certain folk, certain folks, they're also taking our materials and our surveys to those things and vice versa. So we actually have a really uh high functioning partnership with them on who we're reaching out to. Trying some new approaches to make sure that we're reaching new groups and getting new information from different communities. Um, and then synthesizing that together so that we've both got kind of short-term activation information as well as the long-term planning information. Um, so I I expect that to continue um and think it's actually uh a hallmark of of kind of how departments, when they work together, can really get more bang for the buck as you're describing.
Great. Uh, Councilmember Morales.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to go to the second issue, Jasmine, that you um identified. Um, and just uh first real uh around community wealth building, generational wealth building, I just really want to thank OED for their very hard work over the last year to develop the Future of Seattle Economy Study. Um, it's important work and is uh really well aligned with some of the things that we've been talking about for a while. Um uh, and I do want to remind colleagues that um community wealth building is not a new strategy. Um, it's one that this council has time and again reaffirmed our commitment to uh reaffirmed our commitment to Black and Brown communities um to really develop a pathway for more, a more regenerative economy. Um, that is the intent uh behind it. So we first did that two years ago with a slide directing um uh OED, DON, OPCD, NOH to collaborate on a generational wealth building um study report uh along with approximately a million dollars. Uh, we reaffirmed that commitment last year with an additional million as the work group um across different communities uh developed their plan and their strategy for what this could look like. Um, uh, so this isn't just a feel-good project. Um, it's been a really successful effort that that we've led on, that the city has led on. Uh, it has produced some incredible pilot projects um with our community members and the organizations and and development organizations uh that are doing some important economic development work in the city. This is a well-researched uh program uh with strategies that are really grounded in successful results on the ground uh with examples from across the country. And really looking at how, as I said, we move toward a regenerative economy that is driven by community members and particularly driven by uh people of color. That is the intent behind community wealth building strategies, because it is an effort to address historic the the legacy of racist policies. So this is important. It's a significant investment. Uh, you know, it is uh, most of what we have spoken about today is about this kind of commitment to continuing to invest in this way, and it really needs to be thoughtful. Um, and needs the the planning and the capacity to ensure that it is successful in the city. Um, we've got a lot of neighbors uh community organizations that have spent the last, the better part of two years working on this with us. And I just want to make sure that we understand uh we can't lose their uh tacit knowledge. We can't lose their institutional knowledge and their commitment to this work as we move forward. So I'm looking forward to a continued conversation and to learning more about how uh what our next steps are in making sure that this work continues.
Great, thank you. Thanks for flagging that. Um, I was reminded by Director Dingly that maybe part of the reason we have so many direct questions for the department on this item and for Jasmine is because we did run out of time in our initial briefing with CBO the first day of our budget briefings, the Wednesday after we received the proposed budget. So thank you for engaging um on this level of detail today, colleagues, and uh we'll just ask um Jasmine, I'll come back to you for any additional thoughts, but would ask uh Director McIntyre, thank you for having your team here. Thank you, Joe, for being here and um for the department, do you have anything else that you'd like to feature that wasn't um featured uh in our initial briefing?
Nothing to call out. First of all, I appreciate the questions and the interest. Um, I think, I think again, as we're coming, still coming out of the pandemic and and as many of you described, still trying to design a future uh future economy that's more equitable, more inclusive um and more competitive. I I just appreciate the interest and the partnership that you guys have shown in in wanting to develop this framework, wanting to make sure that um, we're working together and have alignment between the legislative, executive and department branches. I think that's a really healthy thing to do. And it's, it's going to be necessary, um, because as many of you mentioned, like, there's a lot of work ahead. Um, and and it's, it's going to be doing things differently. That's part of what our department is trying to do is figure out how do we um, not just go back to what we had, but really um kind of create that future of Seattle economy. Um, so we're very excited. Uh, as I mentioned, like, we're still building our team. So that's kind of a key component, is making sure that we've got the capacity and the group together to deliver on uh what we'd like to to see happen. Uh, and just that we believe that this budget is very in line with everything that we've discussed and is is kind of the next step in uh reflecting back to the community, what they've asked for from our department and from the city in terms of economic revitalization.
Great.
So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we do have two more issues that we want to get through. Um, so uh Councilmember Nelson, did you have something last slide? Last comments on this item? Oh, you're on mute.
Thank you. I'll hold my comments until the end. Thanks.
Sounds good. Great. Thank you. Uh Jasmine, thanks for letting us go into your um spreadsheet a little bit more. That was a very helpful spreadsheet. And um as we go to the next item, ongoing versus uh it ongoing versus one time. I just want to also reiterate the points that were made by Councilmember Morales as we look at that spreadsheet from your first issue identification, uh you know, uh, very thankful that we have a partnership with the department, but also that the council um and as codified in the spend plan had a directive envisioned. So those are two good documents that we can go back to. It helps take out the subjectivity of the analysis here and ensure that there is really correlation and cor- um and adherence to the spend plan as directed and then as um advanced through the activation plan or the economic activation plan. I'm getting the acronym wrong there, but uh, you know, uh, Councilmember Morales, anything else before we move on?
Well, I just want to apologize. I think I got ahead of the game. I lost track of where we were in Jasmine's presentation. So I made my comments uh and I made them a little early. So apologies, everyone.
End of a day too, long days, both days. So let's, let's keep going.
Yeah, well, and you know, Councilmember Morales, I think that they, it's a, the, the, the generational wealth initiative relates to both issues, right? Because if you are looking at wanting to fund other council priorities, such as the generational wealth initiative, um, you know, that's, that relates to issue number one. Um, and then issue number two relates to sort of looking, looking into the future beyond next year. Um, you know, we have um uh most of the proposed expenditures, six point three million out of nine point nine million um as ongoing, um including the nine FTE as as discussed before. Um, but even if, even taking the nine FTE um and accepting those, um there's still um a significant amount of of programmatic funding that is um ongoing. And council may want to change some of those ongoing expenditures to one time to help ensure greater transparency and flexibility in next, next year's budget in order to um have more flexibility to integrate the generational wealth initiative into um ongoing programming. Um, there's also the Workforce Development Strategic Plan, um uh which is expected to be finalized, uh I think towards the end of this year. Um, to provide a comprehensive strategy and a cohesive approach to the city's disparate workforce development programs and focused on reducing the racial wealth gap. And then, of course, you know, underneath, underlying all of, all of um our considerations today is the um uh is the, is the budget looming budget shortfall. Um, given the projected deficit in the general fund, council may want to wait to add new ongoing positions or programming until after decisions about how to address the projected deficit are made. So your options here are to change some proposed ongoing expenditures to one time or no change.
Thank you. Any additional comments on that? I know. All right, great. Um again, I recognize that in order to carry out some of the economic resilience um vision statements that were included in the spend plan as codified and then also advanced through the activation plan that the department worked on earlier this year, personnel is needed. Um, and uh I think that we uh will take you up uh Jasmine on the analysis of um, you know, evaluating each of those positions, but it's not fair to assume that this type of work can be absorbed within existing staff. I understand that. Um, so look forward to having more conversations about how to ensure that there's the sufficient uh staff within the department and also to in in adhere to what I know other council members have expressed as well, which is really trying to get as many dollars out the door to direct services um to support our local economy and creative industry and working families as possible. I do want to say thank you for the workforce, workforce development investments and the partnership with labor uh that the department has had and has worked in partnership to advance the concept of an online hiring hall as we try to be more flexible and get more people into good living wage jobs in the midst of the pandemic. So thank you for the innovation on that approach. Okay, next uh slide, please.
Yeah, I just got one last issue here. Um, so um the Future of Seattle Economy Framework identifies the need for greater childcare services for um Seattle's workforce. Um, they've identified um the need to work with other departments, jurisdictions, private partners, community organizations to lay groundwork for this um need as a systemic big bet. Um, in contrast to this issue of expanding childcare capacity, the other big bets that have been identified um in the FSE resolution uh adopted by council, they involve scaling up um or expanding upon OED's core lines of work. Um, they include developing investment models for more access to affordable capital, developing a master lease strategy um for use by micro businesses and accelerating midsize business growth by offering specialized technical assistance. Um, and so, you know, those are, those seem squarely within OED's uh wheelhouse. Um, and OED's efforts have been comparatively um and understand, understandably, I think, more limited as far as I can tell thus far. Um, and this, this issue seems to have been left hanging. Um, so council may want to consider asking OED to help develop or um identify a coordinated city approach and an understanding of um what is the strategy around childcare, if any, um among all the departments that touch on this issue. And a report back would provide transparency and clarity on departmental roles and expectations in developing a big bet strategy. Uh, so the options are to provide this direction to OED to further develop uh uh a childcare big bet strategy in partnership with departments like DLR or HSD via a statement of legislative intent or no change.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. Um, is there any additional intel on how this might dovetail with some of the work we did four years ago on the Innovation Hubs, I think is the name of it, uh that was done in partnership with SEIU nine two five to try to get more people to be able to open up home-based childcare. Um, given, you know, the, the resources necessary to open centers is sometimes overwhelming, thinking about how we create more home-based childcare and get more people into that career pipeline is something that we'd worked on. And we put funding in to work with SEIU for like a workforce training career pipeline. Um, I'll also recognize eight hundred thousand dollars for a single-family home is the average cost these days. So it's also uh a financial barrier to be able to purchase and own a home in order to do that and modifications necessary for in-home childcare. But is that, is there any connection between these?
Um, I think that's one of the um, one of the thoughts behind this is let's see what, what has been tried in the past, like where, where are those initiatives at? Um, you know, not a specific connection as of yet, but I think is one of the things that could be folded in to such a analysis.
Okay. Any additional comments on this? All right. Thank you for flagging that. And I am not seeing any additional comments. Any additional comments from my colleagues? Okay, yes, please, Councilmember Nelson, coming back to you.
In case the public uh would like to know what we're talking about, I just wanted to say that the discussion of the future of Seattle economy and uh the vote on this resolution occurred on July twenty sixth and that at that meeting, we also had a panel of um of small business owners that uh that have benefited and uh from this work going forward. So I just wanted to let folks know and my colleagues that if you want to watch that video um from July twenty sixth Economic Development Technology and City Light Committee, it might fill in some gaps and and help people understand a little bit more what some of the goals are here. Thanks.
That's great. Thanks, Councilmember Nelson. And if you or your team have that uh Seattle Channel link on hand and want to circulate that, that would be, that would be excellent.
Thanks.
Great. Anything else on this item? All right. Well, I will thank uh central staff. Thank you, Jasmine, for the deep dive on this um this area, uh multiple areas of the budget that uh intersect to try to create more economic resilience and economic stability across Seattle. Thank you, Director McIntyre, for being here with us and uh your team. Thank you, Joe. Um, and as well, thank you to Director Dingly for being with us throughout the day for these technical questions. And the entire central staff team for walking us through the proposed um budget that is uh in front of us. So that got us through four large sections of the presentation here today. Colleagues, our agenda is packed as well for tomorrow. So I want to try to get you out of here so that we can dive right into Department of Transportation tomorrow, the Community Safety and Communications Center in the the Community Safety and Communications Center in the morning and the corresponding new department, I guess, named the Community Assisted Response and Engagement, also known as the Care Department. In the afternoon, we will take the full afternoon to discuss Seattle Police Department. And if there's other departments that you had questions about that you are not seeing on our list, please let me and central staff know right away, because I'd want to offer you a chance to ask questions or to just, you know, for the record, state something. For example, I have some comments that I would like to make on Office of Labor standards. So happy to make some time to ensure that those are part of our discussion tomorrow. Of course, feel free to reach out to me so I can incorporate that as part of our discussion at a timely place tomorrow in our deliberations. But that will conclude our issue identification. So if there is no additional comments for the good of the order, we will see you bright and early at ten AM tomorrow morning. Thank you, colleagues. Today's meeting is adjourned. See you tomorrow.
Recording stopped.